Recording in progress.
Madam Clerk, the time is 6:15 PM. I call to order this special closed session. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. You can join us here at 1333 Park Avenue or join us via Zoom on the information provided on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Powders. Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Here.
And Mayor Welch.
Here, thank you. At this time, do any members have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none. At this time, we will hold public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment on items on the closed session agenda can do so at this time for two minutes, seeing no members of the public attending in person. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers online?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. At this time, we will take item five, closed session. Madam Clerk, we will take items five through seven and report out any reportable items. The time is 6:16 PM. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Madam Clerk, the time is 7:34 PM. We have returned from closed session. Mr. Kennedy, can you report on the actionable items?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. On item 6.1.1, the claim of Andrew Morowitz. On a motion made by Councilmember Carr, which was seconded by Councilmember Botters, the council denied the claim by Andrew Morowitz against the City of Emeryville related to property damage to his building by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:35 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:37 PM. I call to order the City Council meeting of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. You can join us here at 1333 Park Avenue in Emeryville, or to join us via Zoom, please use the information provided on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Botters?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Here.
And Mayor Welch. Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
A second.
We've got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is Ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:37 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:37 PM. I call to order the City Council meeting of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. You can join us here at 1333 Park Avenue in Emeryville, or to join us via Zoom, please use the information provided on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Botters?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Here.
And Mayor Welch. Here. Item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
A second.
We've got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:37 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:37 PM. I call to order this City Council meeting of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. You can join us here at 1333 Park Avenue, or to join us via Zoom, please use the information provided on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda could do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, public comment is closed. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any item off consent? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Botters?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch. Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none? Item five is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment for the consent agenda Are there any ex parte communications to report? All right, seeing and hearing none. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. If any member of the public would like to make a comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda, you can do so now for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public wanting to comment in person. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public online wishing to comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. Item 10 is the consent agenda. Members, would anyone like to pull any item off of consent? Seeing and hearing no members wanting to do so, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item 11 is a public hearing on protecting pollinators ordinances. We have a staff presentation. Is that correct?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have Assistant City Attorney Christie Crowell and Planning Manager Miru.
Please join us.
Presentation. Uh, next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor Welch and councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm going to be providing a bit of initial background on this item. And Miru and I are going to kind of tag team the presentation here. So, um, you may recall that back in June, the council requested an agenda item to discuss several topics prohibiting neonicotinoid use in the city as well as rodenticide use in the city and amending the municipal code to ensure that wildflowers could be grown and, um, to discuss whether the city could develop a voluntary wildflower program. And in October of last year, the council held a study session on those topics. And at that meeting, directed staff to prepare legislation, uh, that's listed on this slide for you to prohibit neonicotinoid products on city-owned and leased property, limit the use of rodenticide in city parks, develop a voluntary wildflower program, and amend the new provisions of the municipal code to ensure viability of that kind of program, and to prohibit grass or turf in new residential product, projects. And staff has thus prepared two ordinances for your consideration. Um, next slide, please. There we go. Um, so the first ordinance prepared prohibits the use of neonicotinoids on city-owned, managed, and leased property. It also prohibits the use of rodenticides on city-owned, managed, and leased property, except that rodenticides may be used in city parks. And this ordinance is consistent with the direction provided by the council at the study session. Uh, as you may recall, the state already regulates the sale and use of certain of these pesticides such that the city faces preemption issues if it takes action to regulate them other than, um, on city property as is proposed for you tonight. Um, and this ordinance proposes adding a new chapter 16 to Title VI of the Emeryville Municipal Code, and a violation would be subject to administrative citation. Next slide, please.
Yeah, so I'll be taking over now. Uh, the second ordinance that you have in front of you today is the turf prohibition. And as this impacts Title IX of our municipal code, uh, these changes that are being proposed were reviewed by the commission last month. The commission voted seven-zero to recommend the ordinance with changes that would prohibit turf in all development projects except where new developments contain a park or an open space accessible to the public and in new residential projects with common areas. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute. Next slide, please. A few clarifications. The term turf is being used as opposed to grass to ensure consistency with the city's water efficiency landscape ordinance or commonly known as Velo. The other thing to note is, uh, that prohibition of turf installation is for both residential and commercial projects as the commercial projects recently have installed more turf in the recently approved projects. Should the council wish to limit the prohibition of turf to only residential developments as it initially wanted, staff can easily accommodate such a request tonight. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. So this is the new section that is being added, uh, to the planning regulations. And it defines, uh, where it will be, or where the, where it will be applicable. It gives a definition of turf, and it also clarifies that it is prohibited. Number four is the exception. And this exception, uh, was elaborated by the planning commission who wanted, uh, to ex, to have, to exclude both, to exclude all development projects which contain a park or an open space accessible to the public. And in new residential projects, they felt that, uh, they, the new residential projects may install turf in a recreational use area which is not enclosed by fencing or other barriers. Next slide, please. Uh, and lastly, this is, uh, the wildflower ordinance. Uh, it's an amendment to Title VI which adds a clarifying sentence, uh, to the existing nuisance provisions regarding weeds that states that growing native plants and wildflowers is not a nuisance unless doing so creates a fire hazard. Uh, once the community services staff has developed the wildflower program, seed program, it will be brought back to the planning commission for review. Uh, they wanted it back for the review, and that's why we have included that. And if desired, we can bring it back to the council for approval as well. Next slide, please. In terms of, uh, the sequa review of this project, it is exempt as it can be seen with certainty that it's not going to impact the environment. In fact, uh, the ordinances are, uh, aimed at water reductions, so it really is helpful to the environment. Next slide, please. So, uh, this ends my presentation. Uh, our recommendation is that you open the public hearing, take testimony, close the public hearing, and then introduce and waive first reading of the ordinances. Both myself and Christie are here if you have any questions.
Members, any questions before we open the public hearing? Vice Mayor Mora?
Do we, um, I, I saw that artificial turf is exempt from the ordinance. Are we, is there a possibility that we are, um, I guess incentivizing artificial turf, which might, may have attendant issues with, uh, microplastic contamination, um, with this ordinance? Or is there anything else that would address concerns about artificial turf?
Uh, well, this ordinance does not speak to that. Uh, there's nothing else in the planning regulations that prohibits artificial turf. Whether it incentivizes or not, it's hard to say.
Any other questions, members? All right. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:47 PM. This public hearing is now open. If any member of the public would like to come and make a comment on this item, you can do so now for three minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person. Madam Clerk, do we have any, uh, speakers online?
No, Mayor.
All right. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:47 PM. This public hearing is now closed. All right. Counsel, I bring it back to you all for deliberation on this item. Member Bauders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to staff and the legal team for their work planning as well and the planning commission, uh, for putting the, uh, protecting pollinators ordinance, um, on an agenda after our discussion in, uh, June and then the fall. Uh, I am very supportive of the, there's two ordinances here. I'm very supportive of, uh, the first one as written related to neonicotinoids and rodenticides. Uh, and I have a request to amend the second one in one space. So, under, uh, the draft ordinance that's attached to the exhibit page two, the section related to the prohibition of the installation of turf in a new development, um, there's an exception that's written there that Councilmember Mora asked about. And, uh, spent a little time with the city attorney's office, uh, in discussion on the planning commission's request. I'd like to modify this. The planning commission, I think in a well-intended manner, um, raised the issue of, uh, a state bill that is not directly germane to our item. So the state bill is about water conservation, and it, you watch the planning commission hearing, it looks like the, um, planning commission got a little distracted by the issue of water conservation in a state law. And this is about turf installation. And so, um, they're, they're proposing that new residential projects could still install turf in a recreational use area, which is not included by, by fencing or other barriers. That definition is part of that water rule, which is separately being managed by the state law. Um, so it's a little outside of the scope of the turf rule. And I would just like to ask, um, Assistant City Attorney, uh, to, for two things. One, just to confirm that we don't need that language in this ordinance to still fulfill the intent of the state law that's related to water conservation. And then my second comment would be by leaving the part related to parks and open spaces that are accessible to the public, we're fulfilling the original intent that council gave the planning commission when we asked for this ordinance to be drafted. Are those items correct?
Sure. Councilmember Bauders, I will just, um, say that the bill in question here is AB 1572. It prohibits the use of potable water to irrigate turf, specifically what it defines as non-functional turf. And that non-functional turf is generally turf that is not located in a recreational use or community space that doesn't contain barriers to fencing. And that's where the planning commission, uh, got kind of that ending definition, uh, there that you see in the exception. Um, but again, that bill regulates water usage, not installation of turf. Um, so our proposed ordinance is not redundant, and it doesn't, it doesn't conflict with the, um, with the new state law. And I'll also note for the council, that new state law doesn't roll out, um, until 2027. Um, and it applies to, um, you know, HOA's privately owned property and that kind of thing. And it starts with the rollout of publicly owned property. So it wouldn't roll out to privately owned spaces for quite some time. So, um, the city's proposal to ban turf is sort of separate and apart from, and a different way of, um, conserving water than, uh, the state's approach, which is to ban the actual use of water rather than the turf itself.
Thank you. Um, Madam City Attorney, do we need separate motions to read by title only, um, for these items?
Um, I'll defer to John's preference on that, but I would say that if you're going to make some changes to this one, it'd probably be easier to have separate motions just so that you make sure that you get, uh, the amendments that you're proposing in, in the first one.
Okay, so, um, to move it along, unless, Madam Mayor, there's others who want to talk about the neonicotinoids, I'll move that item along for us, and then I'll make a motion on my, my inquiry on the second item.
Let me check. Members, any other comments?
Make a motion to read 11.2's ordinance related to neonicotinoids and rodenticides by title only.
Do we have a second? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
We're voting just to, for the read?
Read.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, Mayor Welch. Uh, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville adding chapter 16 prohibiting the use of neonicotinoids and rodenticides on city-owned, managed, and leased property except for the use of rodenticides in city parks to Title VI of the Emeryville Municipal Code and authorizing the city manager to take actions related to implementation and enforcement, sequa determination, exempt pursuant to guideline section 15061 subsection B subsection 3. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move the approval of the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to read by title only the second ordinance related to the prohibition of installation of new turf in development and landscaping.
Do we have a second?
Sorry, and that's with no modifications?
I, I make the modification after the ordinance is read, correct? Yes.
A second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Um, I'd like to make a motion on approving the ordinance with an amendment. On page two of the amendment, under section two of the ordinance where it says 9-4.503 subparagraph J prohibiting the installation of turf in new development, paragraph four, the word exception, to read instead after that, I should say, notwithstanding the prohibition in subsection three above, new development projects which contain a park or open space accessible to the public may install turf for the purposes of a park or open space accessible to the public. That is my amendment, and I will make a motion to that effect.
Do we have a second?
Sorry, I'm just trying to, so you omitted, you, you took out.
I'm removing everything after the word "public." So the, the reference to residential projects, I don't want to exempt residential projects from the turf ban, especially for the reasons, there's no recreational area spaces that we're looking to create at residential projects. So I find that to be unhelpful and confusing for a developer and for people who are trying to provide housing.
So that would include even multifamily, possible new, uh, residential projects that have an open area that's open to the public?
Nope, because I said, I left the part that says a park or an open space accessible to the public.
Got it. Yeah, I, I concur. I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
We're all set.
I'll read the ordinance. I believe I should read the ordinance by title only now. Thank you. Mayor Welch, ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville adding section 9-4.503 subsection J prohibiting the installation of turf in new development to the Emeryville Municipal Code and amending sections 9-4.303 subsection B subsection 5A, comma, 9.9-4.503, comma, and 9-8.212 Title IX, open space standards, public park requirements, comma, landscaping and screening, general provisions, comma, and general definitions, L-terms, and section 6-10.02 nuisance weeds of the Emeryville Municipal Code, sequa determination exempt pursuant to guideline section 15061 subsection B subsection 3. Thank you.
Point of clarification, so I think we voted on this already, should, should I make my motion for the ordinance again?
You can make an, uh, motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Okay, I'm going to do, a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended previously in my discussion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye.
We're all set. Okay. That was fun. Item 12, uh, the resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville authorizing city manager to execute a professional service contract with Art is Love for the Advances of the Arts Center project. Hello, Mrs. Smalley.
Good evening. Excuse me. Madam Mayor and members of city council, I'm Chad Smalley, Community Development Director. Um, this item is a, a sort of a combo, uh, in that, uh, it's a, by way of an update after our study session and, uh, also asking for authorization to enter into a contract to move the Arts Center project forward. Next slide, please. I will spare you the detailed background, but just, uh, for the benefit of those watching at home and, and in the room, the property we're talking about is this, is the site of about 30,000 square feet at 4060 Hollis immediately behind City Hall. Next slide, please. And this has been the subject of, um, many discussions since 2006 when the property was acquired. Um, between 2006 and 2020, several attempts to develop an arts center for the community were advanced for this property culminating in the, the latest attempt, uh, which had a lease disposition development agreement executed, but then later terminated in late 2022. In May of last year, the city council established its priorities for the upcoming fiscal year, and the arts center was one of those 10 named priorities. And then on July 18th of last year, the city council held a study session where we discussed different implementation pathways and the general project objectives, um, to restart the project. Next slide, please. The city council's direction given to us at that study session was to maintain the project objectives that were established earlier. Um, they're outlined here, but basically is to minimize the subsidy, make sure that it's fiscally sustainable to operate, maximize the civic and community arts-based uses of the property, expedite its completion, and use robust community engagement in developing the programming for this facility. The council also had us maintain the key elements, but made note to do some, uh, outreach to the community, uh, on input on what, what this building is going to hold, uh, including space for celebration of the arts, managed gallery space, and flexible use space for performing arts and other events. The council also endorsed the hybrid implementation approach, but with some twists. Um, the hybrid approach was to have the city prosecute this as a, as a capital project and build a building. But the council, uh, and then find an operator later. But the council did say that it was not interested in us just building a cold retail shell that isn't responsive, and I, I appreciated that terminology, something that's responsive to the community. And that in order to make a building that is responsive to the community, we need to accelerate this. we need to accelerate this outreach process. Next slide, please. Finally, the Council also directed us to put together a task force to inform the city on pathways to implementation, and provide some advice to staff in the City Council on the design, and, and talk about viable methods to fund the ongoing operations. Next slide, please. So since then, the city has, the city manager impaneled what I've called the Arts Center Advisory Group. This is a, a group of individuals with expertise in various areas that's outlined here. Their biographies are attached to the staff report, and these folks were appointed to this group on December 18th. It includes a representative from the community, Gene Goldman, who's a longtime member of the Public Art Committee, representation from the Celebration of the Arts, Sharon Wilshar, Nancy Karp, representing the Performing Arts Focus, Frances Phillips for funding, was heavily involved in grant making over the years and recently retired. And then three individuals who run these kinds of centers, Holly Alonso at the Hacienda Peralta, Archana Horsting, recently retired from CalA, and Jose Rivera of the Richmond Arts Center. Next slide, please. At the same time, and somewhat serendipitously, we were in the process of contract, of a procurement for the Cultural Arts District programs. And you'll recall that about a month ago, we asked you to award a contract to ABG Art Group for the program side of that. Well, part of that grant also included a line item for Arts Center feasibility, a small amount, but enough to do some work, because we thought there might be the potential for some work to need to be done in the space. Through the selection process for the Cultural District, it was, the panel found that Art is Love and J. Johnstone Consulting had a particularly strong proposal when it came to their portion of scope of work that dealt with the Arts Center, and some particular competencies that the, the panel wanted to acknowledge. And so we have negotiated, we peeled that part out of the Cultural District grants. The rest of it went to ABG, and this part specific to the Arts Center was augmented with capital funds, and includes the scope that's outlined here. Basically getting up to speed on what the project is, refreshing all of that outreach, and doing the work of getting out into the community and talking to the arts community about what this building should be. The last that was done was in 2008, so that work's getting a little dated now, and it needs to be refreshed. This contract includes engaging with that advisory group to help us solicit questions of them and get that input back to you all. And their scope also includes evaluating at a very high level whether it's worth reusing the building. That was another item that the Council expressed some interest in looking at, and so we've included that in this contract scope. They will also be analyzing operation and funding models, depending on the output we get from the community, and develop the framework for an operating entity. Next slide, please. So in summary, so then, the, the Arts Center Advisory Group held their first sort of introductory meeting on January 25th. And at that meeting, we introduced them to Art is Love and Jane Johnstone, and talked about the scope of work, and introduced them to each other and talked about the task at hand. We have, as I mentioned, negotiated this contract amount of $298,000 for all of that work I just outlined, to be funded through a combination of the Cultural District Grant set aside for Arts Center feasibility and project capital funds. Pending your approval, the work would commence next month. In the outreach activities, would really be gaining steam over the course of the summer. There's cooperation language included in this contract that allows for coordination with ABG Art Group. As there'll be monthly events and even larger marquee events that will be gathering artists of various types and from various backgrounds and different disciplines, it's an ideal time to do this work, because we can meet people where they're at. And so with that, next slide concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And also Charmin of Art is Love and Gene are here to answer any questions you may have of them specifically.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chad. Any quick questions for Chad before public comment? All right. At this time, I'll call for public comment on this item. Any member of the public that would like to comment on this item could do so for two minutes. Seeing no members of the public in person, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Public comment is now closed. Members, I bring it back to you for deliberation. Vice Mayor Mora.
Thank you for the presentation and overview. One thought that came to mind is I see the evaluation of the feasibility for the reuse of the existing building, and I recall part of the discussion we had on the Arts Center was, you know, maybe not about spinning our wheels too much, trying to reuse the building versus just recognizing that it might be easier and a better fit to build something new. So I'm just concerned that if we try to force-fit the existing building too much to our purposes, is that a good use of time or architectural subcontracting resources as opposed to trying to figure out what a, what it, what it should look like, starting from new? So maybe my first question is to the Council is, do they recall expressing a preference for reusing the building? And if not, you know, can we change the direction on that?
I'm gonna defer to Member Bowers.
So the, the original, the Hollis Building here, the longtime plan was to reuse that building. That has been since, I can recall, 2005 or '07, when the plan was originally crafted for the, for the Arts Center. What I will say is that building has gone through a high level of degradation over the past 15 to 20 years. There's major issues with some of the walls and the supports, the roof structure. We've had tarps on it because of some particular past inclement weather in recent years. And my understanding is that when we last were in contract to do this project, one of the causes of cost inflation was the amount of money it would take to seismically retrograde that building in a way to keep the walls up, which had been part of the original intent. The Council hasn't given any specific direction authorizing the wholesale swiping of that, that space, you know, so to speak. We haven't had that discussion. But I do think it's a very good question that should be asked of the group is, how can we make best use of the space and the structure? Or are there ways to retain elements of it? I've, I've said in the past, I think that retaining some of the bricks to do facade work or something like artistic with the building would probably be more cost-effective than trying to use the actual wall itself, the, some of the walls itself. I know that will be a hard thing for some members of the art community, because there's been a long desire to keep that. But I think we should talk to them openly about the cost implications of that, because the ability to realize the project is going to be dependent on how much we try to retain architecturally versus what we start over with and maybe using pieces of it instead.
I appreciate that background. Yeah, I just want to underscore, you know, we're talking, this is no small sum, nearly $300,000, and if we go in a direction that we already don't think is promising, you know, can we do better with that money? So maybe this, this question can go to city staff. Is there, how much flexibility is there in the scope for this evaluation of feasibility? If, you know, can that be redirected towards, I guess, looking at a more useful design? Of like a newer, starting from scratch?
I mean, I, I view that as, as the main part of that task, is evaluating whether it makes sense to go down that pathway at all. I will say, to, to Councilmember Bowers' point, there, there are quarters of the community that feel strongly about this building. I do, I have encountered that in my conversations with folks about this project. And I feel that we'd be remiss if we didn't at least evaluate whether or not it makes any sense to reuse it. Because folks are, there is an expectation in certain parts of the community that we are going to reuse this building.
Should that cost $300,000, or can we, is this a not-exceed contract?
This is a not-exceed contract, and it's on an hourly basis. The architectural scope, if memory serves, is between $1,000 and $150,000.
I see. So if, if we ran into a dead end, or it became clear that this was not a good direction, we could not throw good money after bad there?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And I think that's, that's, we will be mindful to try to find a way to walk into this analysis in a way that doesn't require an enormous upfront investment to get to an answer.
Great, thank you.
Any other members with questions? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so that direction that we provided, Chad, that you mentioned in terms of responsive design, the responsive not just being the use of the building, but also responsive to the, the desires of the community, particularly the art community. I hosted a town hall, and one of the things that came up, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's also been a discussion for y'all, which is concerns that the building, that the Arts Center, now that it looks like it, it can happen, that it's happening in order to meet more sort of corporate desires. And that, and that maybe keeping some of the walls is sort of a pushback against that, that it, it has elements that speaks to its intended purpose, and that it doesn't become a convention center. And, and that, and that's a concern that was raised with, to me, and it stayed with me, that that's something that could possibly happen. And so that's, and so when I think about that responsive design, I just want to, just stress to the, to the public that I definitely hear what you're saying, and, and, and try to keep more of a focus on, on how this develops over the years, to make sure that it becomes exactly what it was intended. So as, as we're looking at the, the structure of the organization, oh, looking at what the mission is, right, is going to be really important. That's because that's going to be like the guiding light for how, how, how it moves forward. And that, and I want to be very supportive of a, a, a mission that has, that responds, right? Thank you.
Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
Item 12.2, is a discussion regarding a letter of support from the City of Emeryville for SB 960.
Madam Mayor, we don't have a presentation on this, but we've provided the documents in your packet for you to use to discuss.
Uh, yes, I will call on that. We'll just do public comment real quick on this item. I'll now call for public item, uh, public comment on item 12.2. Any member of the public that would like to make a comment on this item can do so for two minutes at this time, seeing no members of the public to come to speak in person. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, a public comment is closed. Member Bowers, this was your item, and so I will give you the floor to give more details and lead the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The staff report succinctly defines Senate Bill 960, which has got a committee hearing coming up, which is why it's not on the regular update from Towns and Public Affairs as an item. And essentially, it would strengthen the requirements related to state-owned surface streets. So in our city, that would include San Pablo Avenue, which is State Route 123, and the portion of MacArthur Boulevard, which is within the City of Emeryville, which is also a state route, a state road. This would, other roads would be things like Ashby, which is State Route 13. So this bill prioritizes the requirement, and it actually codifies some commitments that Caltrans has previously made to prioritize the implementation of complete street values in all state route updates, to ensure that there's traffic calming improvements, pedestrian improvements, and transit priority treatments, among other things, that are provided for when there's updates to these local facilities on state highways. So this is supported by a wide group of nonprofit organizations and advocacy groups that support safe streets, including pedestrian groups, Transform, other advocacy groups that do transit advocacy and bike advocacy around the state. And I just thought, I was contacted by some of these folks about this bill, and I think it would be, given our past history leading on creating safe streets and safe movement for people, that it would be good for us to recommend and take a position of support, which would mean that we send, send a letter to the committee, letting them know that the City of Emeryville supports the legislation. I make a motion to take a position of support on this bill and direct staff and the lobbyists to send a letter.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Pryforce.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Mora.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye.
Item 13, Department head reports.
We have none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item 14, future agenda items. Any member would like to put forth a future agenda item, potential future agenda item, can do so at this time.
Uh, yes. Ooh, my bad.
Not a problem. Member Pryforce.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for that. So I would like to, I would like to ask to, to talk about the discussion over rent control and further rent stabilization laws in Emeryville. That the discussion around rent control has come up in terms of new ways of looking and approaching rent control for cities, even considering Costa-Hawkins. And, and so to be able to take a look at what is it that we can do to keep people in their home, renters in their home particularly, is something that I would like for us to, to study.
Do we have majority support to place that on a future agenda item? Member Pryforce, would you be agreeable for that going to the Budget and Governance Committee?
Uh, yes, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, staff. We can put that as a future agenda item on the Budget and Governance Committee, please? If has majority support for it to go to the Budget and Governance?
Sorry, what would be the, the scope of the discussion? Is it a very high-level one, or how specific are we talking?
Member Pryforce?
Um, high-level one, I, I don't understand. What do you mean by high-level? In terms of, uh...
It's like...
That's a, sorry.
Is that a question of feasibility? Is that right? Like, is it like legally permissible?
Uh, yes, yes. To be able to look at what some cities are doing to establish more, to establish better rent control, and whether or not that's something that, that Emeryville can also implement. And so to take a look at the, yeah, those laws. And so if the, if the staff can, can study that, or even for the staff, if the Budget Committee can look at that and see if that's something that, yeah, would affect us as a city as a whole.
Member Bowers has a question there?
A member Bowers.
Oh, yes.
I, I would just, I would ask if Member Pryforce has reviewed the city's prior review of that issue? Have you reviewed what we've done on that?
Uh, in terms of...
Right control. We studied it. You just asked for a bunch of things we've done. I've asked if you've reviewed it.
Um, from, from my understanding of rent stabilization in the past, yes, I've actually had discussions with, with our city attorney on, on, on those. And, and from my understanding that, that these new laws that are, are, that cities are using, are finding ways to, to reengage that, that conversation.
I'm not aware of what the new laws are. In 2017, the City Council referred this item, and we did an extensive and exhaustive study of the status of rent control, and there was an entire staff report and presentation about it. And maybe we could provide that to Councilmember Pryforce. I'm gonna know at this time for the reasons in that staff report.
I have that staff report, and I'm, I'm aware of it, and I've even watched the council meetings, which is why I am suggesting that we take a look at it. I can, I, what I can do is that I can provide more information, which I believe would be a brown act of violation if I discuss it a little bit more, so I'm not sure. I'll, I'll speak to... I'll speak to our city manager and to the attorney, and I can bring it back before this body. But from what I understand, that from the research that I've done, that this is actually a different approach to rent, to rent control, rent stabilization, and even good cause over just cause, which is what New York City is working on currently.
So can we, oh, thanks. So maybe this helps give us a clearer referral to budget and governance. We can ask that the, as it's considered there, it's in the context of the previous exercise? And then the question is then, ask what, if anything, has changed?
I'd...
Member Pryforce was first.
Okay.
Member Pryforce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, 2017 is a long time, and a lot's happened since then. And so to review that, even just to say that this is something that's worth a study is something that I would, I would be okay with it being referred to committee.
Member Bauders?
Yeah, I don't want to have any more of a substantive debate. I'm not aware of any law that's changed related to Costa-Hawkins that would change the housing that could be included. That was the point of that study, and that was the issue that came up. So Costa-Hawkins is a terrible law, but it still exists, and the state needs to repeal it. That being said, I, so if the exercise is you want to send it to Budget and Governance Committee, it's not really within the scope of what the Budget and Governance Committee does, in my opinion, but if that's the majority's wish, we'll take it to the committee, it's fine.
Do we have majority support to send it to Budget and Governance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that will be sent to the Budget and Governance Committee for a future agenda item. Any other future agenda items from any other members?
I'd like to bring before the body a review of the Pledge of Allegiance returning to council meeting proceedings, and I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there majority support to bring that item as a future agenda item? Seeing none, it will not be. Item 15 is adjournment, oh, Member Pryforce?
Yes, one last one. This is a Black History Month one. So I'd like to bring before this body a discussion as to adding the Black National Anthem, which is also titled Lift Every Voice and Sing, to our proceedings during Black History Month, which would be two council meetings out of the year, and I will demonstrate.
Member Pryforce? Member Pryforce, can you give me just a moment? I want to give you your time. Do we have majority support to bring that item as a future agenda item?
Well, I'm not done, so I would have to continue, and then, yeah, and then it could be voted on.
No, you were, just a moment, you were, you wanted to sing it, correct?
Yes.
I wanted to give you your time. I just wanted to make sure we can just do that before. We can give you your time. So I'm not seeing majority support, but Member Pryforce, please.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? All right. Time is 8:24, and Madam Clerk, this meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.